Okay, so I want to welcome everyone to this first informational workshop related to the charter revision process. Thank you so much. So we will be talking today about the taxing districts and we're going to have our esteemed attorney consultant, Steve Mednick, really lead the discussion here. But just to orient everyone to where we are in this process, last November, we passed with 80% of the vote, a charter revision that revised part one of the city charter and part one of the city charter is the powers of the city itself. And as everyone probably remembers, that was a streamlining, it was a cleanup, it was a reorganization, it was not a substantive change. Because that was so time consuming in and of itself, part two, which is the powers of the city's taxing districts, was not touched. And so now we have an opportunity to come back to part two and consider what cleanup, streamlining, reorganization, the each of the taxing districts might like to have within their own sort of sections in part two. So that's what's today's meeting is sort of a kickoff discussion about. Again, this, there will be no rule taken, there will be no vote taken, there will be, this is not a decision making of any kind. This is merely informational. We really welcome questions and discussion. And I think part of the goal here is to hear from all of you taxing district commissioners in terms of how it will be most effective for your input to be provided to this process. So the Charter Revision Commission has not yet been appointed, won't be appointed till sometime this fall. So this is really for you to have a chance to really think about what you're, you would like to do with your charter sections, consider it, consider the process before we've actually gotten into the charter revision official process, which has timelines and deadlines and a little bit less flexibility. And so we really wanted to make sure you had plenty of upfront time to think about this before that sort of official process got kicked off. Council President, do you have anything you want to add before we get started to turn it over?
I was just a few minutes late and had to run back out, but thank you everybody for participating in this process. And Nora really clearly gave the marching orders and how this is going to work. Also, in partnership with Council member Melissa Murray will be a part of the team and facilitating this process. So she's new and I'm glad that she has agreed to be a part of this process. So I know that between she and Nora and Mr. Mednick and all of our input, that hopefully this will be another smooth process. But this, I think, I think as a city, we really need to, I would say, be proud of ourselves that we're actually doing this. And this is not just a one term thing, this is our second round with this. And so we probably have a few more years. And so thank you all. And thank you to Nora for leading this as well and for all the other council members who've given their input during the first.
We're looking forward, I think, to a lot more input in front of this room as it goes on. So Steve, if you want to come up and get started with your presentation, I think would be very helpful. I think that's the easiest, yes, everyone can see and hear you because this session is being recorded for the commissioners who were unable to attend.
Thank you, Madam President, Madam Majority Leader, Madam Minority Leader. It's a pleasure to see all of you in this room. I spent a lot of time with your Charter Commission, it was mainly Zoom, so it's, it's great to be physically in a room with everybody. But I think the Majority Leader laid, laid it out pretty, pretty well. What we did in the last Charter Revision was we took your 1913 document and tried to create a a organized, sensible, readable document for members of, or for the members of the public in the city of Stanford, Norwalk. Stanford did not pass any charter last year. Stanford is still on my mind, it's like, feel like a, I will never get over that one, but this was a wonderful process, it was a really terrific process and we didn't change anything structurally. We really tried to maintain all the structural issues of the Chair of our Commission was very mindful and protective of the interests of the taxing districts. But what we tried to do is we tried to segregate the general government responsibilities and create a, a chapter or part of the document for the taxing districts with virtually no changes. I think we did gender neutrality and we did capitalizations for defined terms because it is part of the charter. So the point I want to make and the reason I asked for this session early in the process, even pre-process, is I didn't want to wait till the Charter Commission was formed to get the taxing districts, I'll look over at taxing districts here, to think about what it is they want to accomplish in this process. And what I'll, what I'll say for the most part is there's not a lot of structural reform that we can do in this process. The taxing district is a creature of special act. There's not a general act that governs that process. So when they're looking, what I would encourage them to do is to look at the, at the information in the charter that relates to them and figure out, are there things in this, in this charter that are not needed? And I'll give you some examples. As I was going through the, the document with regard to the taxing districts, it, several things struck me. You have a number of provisions that are really solid. I, I think that the ethics standards that we have in the taxing districts are revolutionary when you think about the time they were adopted. Very strict and very, very stringent standards and they're really very, very useful. I, I won't comment on the governance structures because I didn't really go into the governance structures entirely. But we cannot really change the governance structure. So that if you wanted to change the way people are represented, you would have to go to Senator Duff, members of your legislative delegation and try to do this through special act to make changes. So you might think about that in this process, are there things you really want to accomplish that are outside the scope of authority for the Charter Revision and the, and the members of the public here in, in the city of Norwalk? But the things I am looking at are, are things like, let me see if I can find it quickly, I have it right here, let me see what, get to the section. You have things like funding and refunding bond issues of 1917 and 1929 that are still in the document. And while those are important historical facts, I doubt very much whether any of those, any of those funds still exist. And so those are the kinds of things you need to look at and say, do we need to keep the Senate documents so that to members of the public, when they want to figure out what it is the taxing district does and what it is they would like to get done through the taxing district, do you need to have these historic references of the document? So those are the things we can do. So we can, in Charter Revision, we can recommend repeal and deletion of those, those sections. But we can't add or modify anything dealing with your governance. But I also thought it would be useful if, you know, you talk to your attorneys, I'm sure you all have counsel that are advising you to take a look at the structures as we've restructured the city government. You may consider doing the same thing there, but you can't do that through Charter Revision, we would have to do that, you would have to do that through legislature. So that's, that's the major point. I wanted to make sure that we, we, and you have these ethics commissions that are all interesting from my perspective. There's just a lot of good things in here, but there's just a lot of miscellaneous that would thin the document down, make it easier for the public to, to, to review. The other thing we might be able to do in the Charter process would be if you look at the front of the document, we've broken things down. We don't have walls, words, I call it. Look at a page and all you see are these words and there's no breakdowns. I get a little bit of that on, on your side, but you might find ways to break it down even more, to make it more readable, to let the public know that this is precisely what's in this section of the charter so that the public is a little more informed on what the powers are and what the interrelationship is between residents of the districts and the district governance operations themselves. So that's my major thing, but I wanted to make sure that we did that early. I want to tell you that, that during the last process, we were very protective of the interests of the taxing districts. It was a different concept to me and most of the communities I deal with around the state, the larger cities in the state. There are no distinct taxing districts as you have in Norwalk, so we were very careful to make sure that we didn't trod on your territory, so to speak. Just wanted to make sure that what we did was helpful and not in any way, shape or form intrusive on the role of the taxing district. So that's really all I can contribute at this moment. Be happy to hear from the taxing districts themselves. But the major point is we wanted them to know, I wanted them to know as we begin this process, that we should be in consultation and try to figure out what it is you think we can do to improve the, the language in the document and improve the structure of the document without altering any of the special powers you have. And that's the other, the point I want to emphasize. If you give it away, you can't get it back. Very difficult to get the General Assembly to give you something back if you eliminate the power. So as you're going through it, you want to make sure that those powers that you think are absolutely critical and essential to your operation are retained and that they are preserved. And, and so I, I think that's, that's, that's the only advice I have to give you in terms of, as you begin to look at this, these sections yourself. So I don't think it's a huge enterprise from the Charter's perspective, but we want to make sure that we don't take anything that we don't want out. And that's why I mentioned the bond issuance, and so those are pretty easy to look at. And, and we were a little frustrated, we didn't have the time really to, to convene all of you last year while we were going through a redoing of a document into the document we have today. So you have any answer to questions from anybody? However, this is done, Madam President, Madam Majority Leader?
Sure, I definitely think we'd like to take questions. Can I just ask you one quick clarification before we invite people? I am going to ask people to come up to the podium just because this is being recorded and I want people to be able to actually hear the questions and not just the answers. So when you're, I think, I just want to make sure that we were being specific. When you're suggesting breaking up, you know, these huge paragraphs of text, so you are suggesting doing what was done in part one, which is to add, you know, chapter headings and titles and subtitles and, you know, paragraph descriptions and, you know, numbers and brackets. So that's, I just want to make sure that was clear as to what exactly you are saying.
Yeah, that is exactly what I'm suggesting. We, we tried to do that a little bit here, but again, we did not want to. Our Chair was very, was very concerned about any implication that we're changing structural, making structural changes. So I'd have them look at that and figure out there's ways that they can do subheadings, subtitles. We rearranged their sections, there may be a better flow. I haven't looked at it for that purpose myself. But as, as they look at it, that's what they may, they may look at. But they can't change things like the vacancy process. How do you fill vacancies and change vacancies unless they get rid of these things? And, you know, you probably as a, treat them in the same way as board and commissions deal with vacancies, but I'm not sure they're going to want to give that up. So those are the kinds of things structurally that they need to look at as they go through this process.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So I think David Westmoreland has his agenda, perfect. Can we, can you let David speak? Thanks.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. Thank you. David Westmoreland, 50 Elmwood Avenue with the Second Taxing District Commission. I just wanted some clarification because I'm a little bit confused. The, what's in the city charter for the Second Taxing District doesn't look anything like what, what our charter, as I know it and I follow, looks like. And I may be confusing, maybe what I consider to be our charter is actually bylaws. But it, it looks, I mean, our, ours has been revised extensively over the years. And what's in the, what the city has in the city charter doesn't really look too much like what, you know, other than the basic things like vacancies and ethics commission, but it doesn't really look anything like what, what we're following. So I'm wondering if we just need to sync up what we have with, with the city charter.
So what I would, thank you, Madam Majority Leader, you want me to answer that?
I guess my question would be, does any other district have that same thing that they've updated their charter and it doesn't look like what's currently? No? So our district is the one that's probably been updated, okay.
So what we did at the Charter Revision Commission is we worked with the charter as it was published officially on the website of the city and had assurances that this was the legal document that exists. One of the things the council members who served in the last term may remember, I gave this spiel on home rule and charter revision and what, how charters work and the things you want to avoid. You want to avoid ignoring your underlying law. You want to make sure that you, you abide by the law that is in your charter. And, and so that the ordinances you passes, pass, or the bylaws, and I'd have to take a look at what those bylaws are, need to be compliant with what the underlying statutory authority is. This document is your statutory authority. We basically took, we have a legislator here, we basically took what the legislature granted for the taxing districts and we codified it in the charter. That's, there was a time where most of your charter was special act before 1957, in the early 1960s. And so I'm not familiar with what David is, Mr. Westmoreland is talking about. But I, you know, I, I think that, you know, that you should probably have your lawyers take a look at it and take a look at what's in the charter. But we just worked with what was in fact in the official charter of the city of Norwalk. And, and we had no question about it during that process, but, but it's something that should be looked at. And look, I, I deal with communities every day of the week where their ordinances don't comply with their charter. I won't name the city, but we did a charter in 2002 for one of our major cities and they still haven't changed elements of their code of ordinances to comply with the charter. I'm doing, we're doing a little bit of that here in Norwalk now where we're fixing the ordinances. I'm also doing it in New Haven and it's, you know, cities and towns are beginning to look at that to make sure that there's, because when a member of the public goes to the code of ordinances and say, well, this is what the ordinance say. And then the charter has a different provision, what's the member of the public supposed to think? It confuses people and your ordinances need to comply with the charter. And the bylaws of your taxing districts need to comply with the special act provisions that have granted you that authority. So I don't know whether the document that Mr. Westmoreland is talking about is consistent or inconsistent. It may be different, but the real question is whether it's compliant with the document that we have before us. And, and it needs to be unless the legislature, unless he's looking at a document that the legislature granted modifications to. And I don't know the answer.
It isn't, I, I don't think it's, I don't think there's anything that jumped out to me as not compliant with what, what was in the city document. It's just, ours was revamped and streamlined somewhere around the late 1990s or 2000. It was much, much more streamlined, but you know, all of the basic stuff is there. The, the other question I have is in terms of approval. So would each of these charter changes, since they're applicable to the districts, wouldn't each district need to vote on them? Or would they be voting on, you know, when, when I go to vote, will I, I only be voting on the second taxing district changes? Or will I be voting on everyone's changes since it's a city charter thing? I'm not sure I understand who's supposed to, or how this is supposed to be approved and by whom.
Yeah, we'll take a look at what it takes. I don't think you have the ability, we'll have to take a look at that because I didn't delve into it that deeply. Whether you have the ability, whether the legislature gave you the ability to make changes within the body of the document, that'd be wonderfully, they did. I haven't tripped over that and I haven't dug down deep into it. I was hopefully going to rely on council to the taxing districts to make that determination. If we are taking things out of the charter document, unless the special act says otherwise, it would be the voters of the city that would make that determination since it's part of the city charter.
Okay, thank you.
We have to see what the provision says in the charter. If that's clear, then that's a different story.
Can I just ask, because again, so this is being recorded, so we, we want people to be able to hear Pam or someone else who said, no, do you want to come up quickly and explain on the microphone your understanding? Because again, I think this is exactly why we're having this meeting, right? We want to get the questions out, we want to make sure that Steve is aware of all these questions so that we can really be prepared and delve into them and have good answers for you with enough timeline for people to be able to respond. So thank you so much.
No problem. Kevin Barber, General Manager, Third Taxing District. And I actually have experience with the Second District as well many years ago. But I know the Third Districts, we've been informed by our attorney that it would be, the electors of the Third Taxing District would be the ones to have the authority to change our charter. So it's our, our understanding that other city residents would not be voting on a third or the second or the first. Our residents would be voting just ours, our changes. So then the question I would have is how would that work? I mean, I would think we'd have to do it, or it'd be done at the same election as the cities in their charter or, you know, to me it would be very confusing how that's going to work. But I think that's something would happen during.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's, that's helpful. But what I'd like to see at some point, if the, the districts can have their attorneys, let me know what section of the special act allows for that, that would be helpful. Because if the charter, if it's silent, I'm not sure what the authority for that would be. On the Charter Revision, there's, there's a statute that governs Charter Revision. If there is self-help restructuring that you're entitled to, I'd like to, you know, I, I, and I'm not saying this in a challenging way. If we can do it that way, that would be, that would be wonderful, it would make the Charter Commission's job a little easier. They'll have plenty of other things to look at as well. But I would ask you to have your attorneys take a look at that and give me the citations as to how that would be done.
And we're definitely happy to facilitate for each of the charters, you know, a line of communication with Steve. We can make sure that everyone has contact information. So again, to make this as easy and streamlined as possible. Other questions from other folks? And again, just if you want to step up to the podium so everyone can hear. Someone else?
Hi, I'm Elsa Peterson Elba Cowski. I'm the Commissioner of the First Taxing District. So I just have an opinion or comment and a question. So my opinion or comment is that, in my mind, it seems like the overriding goal is to make the language of this portion of the charter clearer so that the average citizen can go to that and read and understand why we have taxing districts and what they do. And then my question is, I know that the city is also doing redistricting. So I'm not sure how the boundaries of the taxing districts might be affected by that.
Steve, do you want to?
With regard to the second question, the redistricting should have no impact on the taxing district structure. It has nothing to do with reapportionment and one person, one vote for city elected positions.
And there was, there is special consideration to the reapportionment to, a suggestion was not to really merge the taxing districts and change. So on people like in, like the First Taxing District, um, that has really specific guidelines, wouldn't be like moved over to a different district to make it more confusion. So that was like a special request that we put in for the reapportionment committee.
Yeah, so if you look at the ordinance and the reapportionment, you'll see that one of the criteria is to the maximum extent possible that the taxing districts remain within a single district.
And there's also something called communities of interest. And we will be, when that committee is up and running in the county, City Council, County Council will have to address the issue. That would be something they'll have to take into account as they create the districts.
And I, just to comment too, I think you had raised the question about the elections a little bit. And again, this is something the city has experience with because we have had to do, you know, taxing district commissioner elections in, you know, other municipal elections. So we do have some mechanisms and one of the many reasons we're very cognizant in the redistricting of trying to keep the taxing districts within districts is to sort of simplify that process for, you know, our voters, our registrars of voters having to keep track of all the separate ballots. So this is something that we've done before and certainly will have its complexities. We will also do our best to be as clear with our communication as possible. I mean, we tried very hard last time with the Charter Revision to really communicate to folks and that certainly is for this time around. We don't want anyone to be confused about what's happening to the maximum extent we can. Other questions from folks? Okay, Jim has a question.
So just to be clear on this, so our objective here is to take a look at the existing charter and smooth out the language, make it a little bit more readable and so forth. So in, in an effort to do that, if the, if it, if the commission deems that the wording in the charter is going to change, are we then going to get individual approval from the taxing districts that they agree with? That the, the objective of the verbiage has not changed to affect them in any way?
Want to, Steve, do you want to talk about, because I think this gets into the process questions we need to talk about?
Yeah. My hope would be, Councilmember, the, that the taxing districts will take a look at these provisions and make recommendations. You know, if they want to work with the commission, have the commission do it, there's no problem with the commission taking those steps. I just think it's, you're, you're starting to go on a little thin ice if we start making those kinds of changes. If they're, if they're really cosmetic editorial changes that are allowed for ease of use and the taxing districts are comfortable with that, certainly something the commission can do. I would, we, we tried to avoid in the last process having any jurisdictional disputes. And I think the more you go into the language, the more reluctant I would be without their cooperation as, as a commission is taking a look at those provisions.
Yeah, I can understand getting into the semantics of the language and, you know, the editorializing and so forth. But if there was a meaningful change that, let's say, five of the six taxing districts agreed to it and it didn't really affect them, but maybe a sixth taxing district, and I'm not, you know, specifying the sixth taxing district. I'm just saying, one of those districts decided that, no, no, it doesn't really agree. Would they have an opportunity to, to, to vote that down or, or how would they, how would they be able to?
Well, a lot depends on whether their council can show me and persuade me and perhaps Mario, the Corporation Council, that they have separate authority to vote things down. That would change my view on that and they, of course, they would if that authority exists. If the authority doesn't exist, the way it's working will be, it's a citywide vote. But I think the commission would be very reluctant to get into a war with any of the taxing districts. And if there's a taxing district that isn't happy with the change and fix three of the taxing districts and you don't fix the others. The ones that are objecting don't get fixed, I think would be the answer politically. Because you don't want whatever other work this commission is going to be doing on the general government. Remember, the general government work we did last year was structural, not substantive. And if there are going to be substantive changes, I guarantee you that just any of the things we're going to try to do in the next year are going to be far more controversial and whether they should or shouldn't is another question. But there's going to be more gravitas and more political resistance to some of the things that may come up in the, in the next Charter Revision, certainly than there were, was in the last, where we avoided most of the political pitfalls. But it's going to be impossible to avoid if people here at the council and the commission that you appoint want to deal with some structural issues. So my general view would be if the majority of the taxing districts are willing to work with the commission to modify the language without any structural changes. And one of the taxing districts didn't want to do it, we probably wouldn't touch that taxing district just to avoid the political fracas.
And again, just to remind everyone of the process that we went through last year. The Charter Revision Commission will make their recommendations. Those will then come to the council. The council will have the opportunity to make suggestions and propose further revisions. It will come back, we will be able to do an up or down vote. So again, I think that it would be very easy for a taxing district that had concerns about any of the proposed changes to come to the council and raise them. I, I certainly don't have any interest in doing anything that the counseling, that taxing districts don't want to do. I don't think that that's really on anyone's agenda. And I think again, because there are different taxing districts with different provisions in here, each taxing district can do something different. You know, I think that's part of the, part of the reason to engage everyone so early is it's entirely possible that this will look different for the different taxing districts because they have different. that this will look different for the different taxing districts because they have different members, different concerns. I think we are kind of anticipating that. Councilmember C?
Yeah, and just I know as a commissioner, we can't really make any major changes in our districts without having like an electors meeting and getting approval from our electors. So I think the, the process might be is if we talk about it as commissioners and then we bring it to our electors and have a special electors meeting on this topic, have it passed there and then it goes there. That might be the way around it, um, so that, because we can't, we can't really say we approve this as commissioners or as a district without going to the electors anyway. So we approve it as a board, bring it to our electors, they approve it. And I think that might be a way to streamline it so that there's nobody getting their feet stepped on. And I, I haven't read the charter. It's that point to find if that's the way it's supposed to be done, but just off the top of my head, that's, we have to do that with the budget or any purchase or any large property or anything like that. So that might be the way to make this go smoothly.
Thank you, sure. I think we've got more questions.
Andy My, Andy Meyerson from Sixth Taxing District and Jody Sattler. That may, that may have answered our questions. Um, we were just looking through our charter and for the most part, our charter, it needs to be cleaned up, the language, this, this stuff in there from the mid nineteen hundreds. It looks like there hasn't been a change since nineteen fifty-five. Um, but one of the questions I had was, are we looking for uniformity across the districts in, in the charter? So they all have certain, are there certain elements that we need to keep in there? I know there will be some differences, but are there specific things that we want to keep in there to make them look somewhat uniform? Because I, I suspect that they were all written at different times in the nineteen hundreds.
I think that's a great question and to a certain extent, that's a little bit of a question back to all of you. I do think it's helpful for residents, the more that there's a certain amount of uniformity. Also, each of your districts operates in a little bit of a different way and has different factors. So I think that's, again, maybe a very helpful conversation for all of you to have amongst yourselves. Are there opportunities for uniformity, you know? Can we organize it so that everyone has, you know, their governance structure first? Are there boundaries first and then their governance structure? You know, can we make it so it's the same order of operations, even if the content is different? Are there things that would like to be written in the same way? You know, like, I think these are great questions. I mean, this is exactly what we want to talk about. But we also don't want to tread on anyone's feet and we definitely don't want to get rid of any powers that you, you know. So that's why, again, we're very cautious about this and we want to start this process and conversation early. Um, because they are unique creatures of special acts and that makes it complicated.
It did, Jimmy answered, asked my question for me. Uh, but one of the things I will say is I think the, the uniformity, yes, is important in terms of language. Um, but the economy that each sixth, or each taxing district has, I think is really important and adds to the city of Norwalk. And I know we're unusual in the state, I just went through this process with this state DMV and they couldn't figure out what a taxing district commissioner was. It took a while to even explain what we are and edit the charter out. But I think that adds to the importance of what we're doing because the autonomy helps us have a little bit of control over all of our parts of our city. And I don't know if the city is going to have any influence on that, but I would just urge all of us to remember that the autonomy is what helps keep all of these parts moving. Thanks.
Do you have, yes, Steve, do you have things you want to add to that at this point?
The reason for this meeting is to respect the autonomy of the taxing districts. That's why, uh, I, I suggested having this meeting early on. So I don't think there should be any concern about the autonomy of the taxing districts. I'm a big supporter of uniformity. The chief of staff and I were talking just before this meeting about some of the things we did in the charter revision that allows for uniformity of the way you set up boards and commissions in town. Uh, so that when a member of the public looks at the code of ordinances, where most of these are going to be, they'll know where it starts and how it flows and there'll be a consistency throughout, uh, all of those. So if the districts sit down and look at what they've got and work out a flow that, um, is, um, is, um, uh, systematic and cogent and explanatory, uh, that's fine. But I, I, I would not make that a requirement if everybody has their own autonomy and wants to, um, um, you know, reorganize it in the way they think is clearest and not follow, um, the mold per se. Um, that's fine as well. I think the real key is to have the taxing districts engaged, have them look at what they've got um, and come up with their suggestions. Uh, I, again, I, I do want to emphasize the earlier we can resolve the issue of what, what legal ability they have to change the structure, the better off we'll be. If the earlier we know that, uh, where we know that it's not a matter that the commission has to address. If there is an opinion, there might be a court case that I'm not aware of, um, then we're far better off. So I would encourage all the taxing districts to talk to their attorney. I don't want to spend your money, but to talk to your attorneys and figure out what it is, um, they think can be done to change their districts. The way I look at it as any other special act, we have a lot of special act left in the, in the, uh, in the old charter, in our current general government charter, you have to be very careful. Because once you give it up, you can't take it back. So, uh, and the only way to change a charter and, and the taxing districts are in the charter of the city is the way I've suggested. But I am very open to the concept that there is another way to do it if the councils for the, uh, the attorneys for the taxing districts uh, have legal authority or they're happy to listen to them and hear from them.
That's great. Um, and other questions?
I just want to follow up on what Jalen said because I wanted to ask that question. And so I know that the electors have to vote. And what's that process like? Is there like a ten day, thirty day time period or do you have one day where everybody comes in and votes? Because if it's a month or some time, then that factors into our timeline.
I think the time, at least like in the first taxing district was, I think it's ten days notice or something like that, right, Elsa? I think something like that.
Yes, thank you.
So in the first taxing district, our series of electors, um, meetings related to the budget are two weeks apart. Um, and I, yeah, off the top of my head, I can't remember whether that's just for convenience that it's always on a Wednesday and that's why it's two weeks or, um, if it actually is a two week, um, interval that's specified. It, I, I tend to think it is a two week interval that's specified in, in the, um, in the rules that we follow. I'm not sure what level those rules are codified.
But then that's just basically like a notice thing.
Right.
So we just have to put out, like say, a two week notice to say this is when we're going to have the election and, or the electors meeting. And then you have the elected meeting and we do it. So there are ways that you do, especially we, in the past, we have done special electors meeting.
But that's really helpful in terms of timelines because I think that's exactly the kind of thing we're going to have to think about how that intersects with the Charter Revision Commission's timeline. Um, and Steve, so to that point of timeline, um, again, we are hoping to or planning to appoint the commission in September. When would it be helpful for you to be hearing from the taxing districts in terms of their recommendations, their initial requests? You know, what's, what's your sense on timeline? And I want to make sure it intersects with their timeline as well because again, people have budget and other timelines of their own that they're going to have to worry about.
Well, I was just looking at, uh, the first district and they have an annual meeting in November. Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
Yep. And so, um, so if the commission is up and running, let's say by October, November at the latest, um, one of the first things that the commission will do is hold a public hearing. And so it would be enormously beneficial to the commission sometime in November for this public hearing if the taxing districts between now and then, that's the reason we're here today, can take a look at these things and, um, come up with a kind of a, a reasonable approach that they'd like to take. And then one of the things that the commission would do, if the commission has a function, again, I, I want to be respectful. If they can amend this on their own, and I'd be most interested in hearing that, um, it may diminish the need for the commission to address these issues. So I'm, I'm sincere when I say that I'd love to hear from that, uh, from the, the attorneys to see what that authority is. But I would say that the first opportunity would be the public hearing and I would strongly recommend, um, that we think about if we do have a function that we have to play with the taxing districts, that maybe we create a subcommittee, um, that can work with the taxing districts throughout the entire process so that when we're finished with the process, by the time we have the second public hearing, let's say next May, which would be the rough time, you have to start doing this to get it back to you, uh, for consideration that we would have a, a product that the taxing districts are comfortable with and that, um, when they come back to the second public hearing, they're all saying, you know, hooray, hooray, as opposed to completely think this is awful. Uh, so that's what we're aiming for, hooray. Uh, but, but the real first opportunity would be at the first public hearing sometime, let's estimate October, November.
Terrific, so taxing district folks, is that helpful to all of you in terms of a timeline of sort of initial, um, you know, goals of, of getting some feedback as to kind of what you would like to do by, you know, November, October, November? Um, because that will then guide us, as Steve said, in terms of if we're going to set up a subcommittee or the chat, you know, the chat taxing districts or what the sort of process might be on that.
We can hear from council as soon as possible. Just to make a point because that, I don't know, that really will impact the process.
Absolutely.
I just want to emphasize.
Yes, we definitely want, we want to do, uh, only what we need to do and we want to leave to people what they can do. Um, terrific, well, this was very efficient. Does anyone else have any last questions before we wrap up? Okay, well, I am so grateful to everyone who came out today in person and online. I'm so grateful for the work that we are asking you to undertake, which we know is, um, substantial. Uh, and we're really looking forward to working with you on the process. As you can see, folks are very engaged, so feel free to reach out to any of your council members if you have questions about any of this as issues come up. Obviously, you can be in touch with Steve as well. Um, and we urge, as he said, your councils to be in touch with him early and often. We will be happy to make those contacts and we look forward to working with you. So thank you all very much for your time and for your service on the taxing districts.
As a point, just one point, for historical purposes, can we have a roll call of council members that are attending this meeting?
Sure, absolutely. I mean, Dixon, Dixon, do you mind?
No, absolutely. Uh, Mr. Burnett?
Present.
Mr. Goldstein? Mr. Lopez? Ms. Najilski Eichner?
Present.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Ayers? Mr. Seed?
Present.
Mr. Wiggins? Ms. Young?
Here.
Ms. McMur?
Present.
Ms. Murray?
Present.
Ms. Dunn?
Here.
Mr. Sutton?
Present.
Mr. Frere?
Here.
Ms. Shanahan?
Here.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, we have eleven in attendance. Thank you, thank you.
I just raised one last point.
By all means.
If I may, um, because I did not bring cards and it, it probably would save the city a little money if not everybody contacted me. So I was going to recommend, I don't know if the, if the city clerk is the proper party that people could contact through email or telephone to identify who their lawyers are and get that information in. And then we can figure out how to respond. I just want to make sure everybody had a place where they can communicate.
Um, probably the best person to contact is actually Esther Murillo, who was on the emails that I sent to all of you. She is the Assistant City Clerk who assists the, um, common council and she can gather all of those names and contacts and do one coordinating. Um, but again, people should also feel, always feel free to reach out to me or anyone else on the council with questions and we'll get it sorted.
Is that it?
Is that it?
Do you need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, yes, we'd like to motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Favor?
Everybody.